Number four is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute an agreement for professional services with AECOM Technical Services Incorporated for preparing, preparation of a community impact study for the San Rafael Target Store project at Shoreline Center.
Good evening, I'm up for this one.
Okay, good evening, Ms. Mackel.
The item before you is a professional services agreement for the community impact study for the Target, and the purpose of the report is to give you a lot more detail on the sales tax and the employment, as well as the fiscal impact to the city, to allow the city council to really get their hand, your hands on what the net benefits will be for the Target project. AECOM is a firm that we're, staff is recommending to produce this report. They were ready to work quickly with us to determine a scope of work that would be a data-supported and unbiased way to help determine the community benefits that we believe the city council and the community desire, and that's really based on the last two council meetings where there was lots of public testimony and council comments. AECOM will look at the whole trade area, but they'll focus on San Rafael specifically, including the downtown, because that seemed to be an area of concern. In addition, they'll look at case studies, several communities are listed in the report. And as an econ, as an economist, the staff, economists, the staff at AECOM can really look at trends and control for things such as the decline in the economy, or the upswing in the economy during the time periods that they're looking. We did not include an assessment of affordable housing, as sometimes those are included in a community impact report, because the city already has an ordinance on affordable housing, and we have a, an impact fee for affordable housing, so that's already been handled, if you will, through our ordinance, we didn't want to try and create something new for this. And as the city attorney mentioned, that this is a community impact study looking at the economy and the economic issues. The EIR public hearing was completed, the last hearing, last two meetings at those hearings, and so issues such as the greenhouse gas, traffic, zoning, those are things that were handled in the EIR and the addendum to the EIR, and are not part of tonight's scope of work or the discussion. The work in this report will be quite extensive, it will take 10 weeks just to get to the first administrative draft, and that's based on the work that's before you tonight. If we add work to that, of course, it will be higher costs and a longer time period. As it stands right now, we would get back to you, at the soonest we'd get back would be in one of your March meetings, your last March meeting, it could slip till April, depending on how fast we can collect the data that we need to collect. There is no cost to the city, the applicant will bear this, just as they did all the costs of the preparation for the EIR and the addendum to the EIR. The cost is approximately $79,000, but we did add in tonight's report the request that you authorize the city manager, should the council want some additional study, to please direct us so, and the city manager will negotiate that and get that into a contract so we can get moving on this right away. Our city manager would like to add a few comments to what I just said, and then we would like to have Alexander Quinn, one of the directors of AECOM, he's here tonight to walk you through the scope of work, so you can hear from him what he wants to study, and you can, of course, ask any of his questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schutz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, I just wanted to add a few points on to what Nancy mentioned about our staff's recommendation process of how we arrived at AECOM. Historically, the city, the city had contracted with RBF Consulting to prepare the project EIR, and AECOM formerly ERA was the economic firm that did the urban decay analysis, that was part, that was required by SEQA of that study. So it is, it's very typical in doing environmental impact reports, that the lead firm, in this case, RBF, would put together its team of subs or sub consultants in different specialties, in this case, economics, in other cases, cultural resources and that sort of thing. So that's how we originally became familiar with ERA and AECOM in this particular project. Staff's recommendation tonight is to use this particular firm because of their history on the, on the project, in large part because of the fact that they did the urban decay, and they've been involved in the public hearings that have taken place on this project to date. In fact, our initial template that we put together that became the scope of work that's before you tonight, the first part of that was, was staff putting together the council questions from your two public hearings, and sending that to AECOM, and then them adding their expertise and working with staff to put together this scope of work. So it was very valuable to have them present at the public hearings on December 6th and then December 20th, to really understand what you're looking for in this particular study. They are well-respected and will perform an unbiased analysis, and I just wanted to mention on the timeframe, that we would add on, say, three or four months, depending on the type of RFP process, if the council chooses to direct staff to go in that direction tonight, because we would need to write the RFP, send it out, give time to reply, go through a selection process, and then have staff make a recommendation to council. So similar to the timeframe, excuse me, that Nancy Mackel mentioned to you of when the study could be done, we'd probably be coming to you at that point with a recommendation for an economic firm to do this type of study. So, and again, looking at probably earliest of March and more likely April, if we were to go down that road. But again, staff's not recommending to do that tonight, they're recommending to use the firm that has been associated with this project, that the city has contracted with RBF Consulting, and we think that they have the same type of expertise as other Bay Area economic firms that does this sort of work, and Alexander Quinn, who's here, will be able to talk specifically about their firm's expertise and about the scope of work. I just wanted to add that, thank you.
Okay, before Mr. Quinn starts, any questions at this point? Okay, good evening, Mr. Quinn.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, my name is Alexander Quinn. I'm the Director of Sustainable Economics for AECOM. AECOM is a very large, 40,000-person-wide global firm. Our sub-practice is the economics group, it was, primarily consists of professionals from Economic Research Associates, which started in the 50s, 1950s, and has done numerous analyses around community commercial impact assessments. My experience is actually, I came from EDA, EDA is another firm that was acquired by AECOM, these two firms now make up the planning, design, and economic practice of AECOM. We are not hired or, or working, our group is not working with Target, we are independent of Target, and our superiors are independent of Target, and we make sure that our analysis is hard on data and unbiased in its, in its form. Just in terms of other work that we've done recently, we've done a number of urban revitalization strategies, you may even remember that ERA worked on B Street feasibility study here in San Rafael. We also have done work in Berkeley, I recently worked in Chinatown, San Francisco. We've done community impact assessments, not on Target, but on Walmarts, one in South San Francisco, that project got denied, urban decay study in Eureka, and a project in Truckee. All of these are analyzing the big box retail and what it has impacts on historic downtown settings, so we have a lot of experience in this arena. In each case, the market is unique, you can't define one case and say it's going to create urban decay, or it's going to have commercial impacts, each market is different, and so we have to look at each local market. So just, let's go over very briefly the scope of work and what we presented. The first is just to do a basic review of the project and get as much information as possible, including if possible, it depends on whether Target is willing to disclose this to us or not, is the actual wage information from Target, what they propose. They may or may not provide that. We have other sources that we can use, it will be, it will be in ranges, it's not as perfect as if, if Target provides that data for us. Then we get into the market assessment, and that is, you know, the traditional real estate supply and demand analysis that we're all very familiar with, you look at vacancy rates, you look at the inventory, you look at the retail mix, you try to understand what's going on in terms of how things have changed, we know that about, since the third quarter of 2006 to the third quarter of 2009, there's been about a 19% decline in retail sales in the state of California overall, especially in automobile retail sales. But we would look at those, and we would evaluate them based on normalizing the case studies, so when we look at other communities, we'd actually look at them compared to their time and place, if that makes sense. So we normalize it statewide, and then we compare that to the local jurisdiction. Once we do that, we then look at the amount of spending capable within San Rafael, and then how much is actually being captured. This is specific to San Rafael, this is not looking at the surrounding areas in terms of the retail capture. In other words, we're looking at how it impacts the supply, does it cannibalize retail establishments within San Rafael? And it's going to be based on categories and not individual stores, I want to make that very clear, we're not going to say, this X store is going to lose 20%, we're going to say, food stores are generally represented by this amount, this will have an impact by this percent in the food store category. Then we look at economic impacts, and then, what you're looking at here is not just, what is the economic change specific to Target, but what is the net difference? So really, we're talking about how it changes within San Rafael overall. So you're looking at declines in other places and benefits at Target, and seeing how that balances out. Where feasible, we'll provide employment information in terms of wages and salary benefits. There is a source, it's called Longitudinal Employment Household Dynamics, that provides some information on very specific census blocks, and so we can look at what people are getting paid, employees are getting paid within certain areas like downtown San Rafael. Then we look at the fiscal impacts associated with this, this is just the traditional analysis of, again, the net change, so not just how, what does Target bring, but what does it also change in terms of competitiveness for San Rafael overall? And that would be for sales tax and property, property tax. And finally, a case study assessment is, is going to be a little bit more qualitative, but we are going to do a quantitative side to this. It's very dependent on the cities participating in our effort, because we need to get very localized retail taxable sales from the Bureau of Equalization, and to get that, you have to get the disclosed confidential information from the local jurisdictions. So we're hoping that they'll be good partners, some cities have already been identified, Davis, Albany, Dublin have recently introduced Targets, and again, we would normalize it over the retail period to account for the decline in retail sales overall. And then we would talk also to economic development directors, where there are not economic development directors, we'll also talk to Chamber of Commerce. So first, economic development director to see how it's impacted their community and the economic health of their community. And with that, I would really offer you, to invite you to ask me any questions as relates to this study. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions at this point? Great.
One just popped into my mind a minute ago, you mentioned three cities, Davis, Albany, and Dublin.
Mm-hmm.
I know there's been some concern expressed in the communications we've received today about what constitutes a comparable city, I would have guessed geographic proximity, population, similar downtown, some, all kinds of things. Davis and Dublin are quite a ways away, was Napa considered, for example? There are probably a half dozen or dozen communities that are closer, probably closer in population, why those three, and why not others?
If, if I remember correctly, Napa, the reason we didn't choose it is because the Target wasn't open, was that the reason that?
Yeah, two Targets.
Was that Napa one already in here? Let me see, oh no, sorry. Potentially including Nevada, Napa, Albany, Davis, Dublin, Santa Rosa, or Walnut Creek. So Napa is, is one that's listed, we are looking for whatever's the best parallel, and just like you said, it'll be based on the demographic parallels between San Rafael and these comparable cities.
Okay.
May I add something? We have six cities listed, and the scope of work is to look at four of them, so we're going to take a closer look at all of them to see what's really going to be the most comparable.
You'll find the four most comparable cities.
Right.
Demographically, thank you.
Yeah.
Damon.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn, I just wanted to make sure I fully understand the prior experience with your firm on CIRs. You mentioned one project in South San Francisco with a Walmart store, are, can you kind of more fully describe any experience you have with community impact reports?
Right, so in that Walmart study, we actually looked at the labor and local community and commercial impacts associated with introducing a Walmart, and what we found is that there was going to be some deleterious impacts on the local downtown, and that that was going to have some negative, potentially urban decay impacts. And as a result of that study, what we did is we did the traditional market retail supply and demand analysis, and from that study, we concluded that there would be some significant impacts associated with the introduction of South San Francisco Walmart. That project was denied.
Have you done any other community impact report studies?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, I'm working on a number of them right now, actually, I'm working on one for CPMC in San Francisco. The Truckee one is another example that we've done, that one is, there's a historic downtown and just south of it, they want to put in a new retail establishment, and it's understanding what the implications are to the downtown, how different they are in terms of what type of retail goods they're serving, is there enough market support within Truckee to accommodate that? You have a number of visitors there, is that helping to accommodate the retail demand? And if so, what are some of the mitigation measures that you would put into place to reduce, limit the amount of competition that would result in significant vacancy in downtown Truckee? That's just another example, I think I've got, see, well, downtown Berkeley, San Bernardino, Eureka, we did actually, in that case, we did a peer review of, of a Walmart study done by CBRE, who also does these types of studies. The firm that I worked for prior is a firm called Bay Area Economics, and we did a number of these analyses at BAE, so Elk Grove had a new mall that it was developing, and there's a mall right near it, and we had to evaluate whether that was going to close down the other mall, so we had to evaluate the growth of, of demand over time, and whether or not it would support both malls.
Has your firm, and by that I mean AECOM, done any work for Target?
I can't speak to 40,000, the 40,000 employees that are within AECOM, because that's bigger than my knowledge, but within the groups that I'm in, so that would be Economic Research Associates, that legacy group, EDA, the Planning and Urban Design Group, none of us have worked for Target, and no one in the San Francisco office I call, I talked around, none of them worked for Target. It's very possible that somewhere in AECOM of the 40,000 employees, someone has at one point worked with, with Target, does that mean that we're beholden to them hardly?
One issue you identify is that you'll be focusing on San Rafael is a relevant market, and some issues have been raised about whether it would be more appropriate to define the relevant market in a different way, perhaps broader.
Okay, so, so there's two things that we're doing, one is, what is the capturable area, and that actually is broader than San Rafael, because we're just trying to figure out who, where the dollar's coming from, right? So that's the market support, but then we're asking the second question, which is, how does it impact San Rafael? So that is specific to San Rafael and the commercial establishments in that market. So there may very well be other retail areas that might or might not be impacted that don't exist in San Rafael, I can't speak to that, but our analysis would be specific to you as San Rafael City Council members. But in terms of the purview of our analysis, or how we reach, we have to, as economists, look at just the general spending and where, where the money's coming from.
On page two of your report, you mentioned that the analysis will not, or your proposal, you mentioned the analysis will not include primary data collection, what did you mean by that?
Okay, so that's direct survey, it's basically if we were contacting either shoppers themselves, or if we were contacting businesses. It means that we're primarily relying on ES202 data, which is Economic Survey 202 data that comes from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, it comes from the, or it's the BOE, which is the Bureau of Equalization, which is that taxable sales data that's really important to understand, or it's the firm-wide, firm data that's provided, that helps us inform how the area is performing, that is hard data versus more survey form, that, the reason for that is that it's longer, and often in a very visible public process can be a bit skewed.
I was happy to hear you say that it would be optimal to receive wage and benefit data from Target, in fact, I believe, and I think I'm speaking for many on the dais here, that Target should be forthcoming with that kind of information as the applicant seeking approval. You mentioned that you will, you would seek that direct data, correct?
Right.
And that would help your analysis, and if you could just remind us, if Target continues to claim proprietary information, et cetera, as we've heard so far, what kind of alternatives would you have?
Okay, so there, there are three primary sources that you could look at, there's CAL-EDD, which provides wage information by different industry category, by North American Industry Classification System, or NICS code, that's one mechanism that you can use, you can get it down to pretty local level metropolitan area, but it's imperfect, and it'll be broader retail category. The other are some private sources, there's, I think it's called Open Glass Door, I'm not, I can't say that precisely, but it's Open Door, something like that, they, what they do is they actually go out, and they get confidential information about wages by different categories, so when you apply for a job, you know whether or not you're in the range of what people make for that specific job. Again, this is really self-reported, so I can't speak to the quality of that data. And then finally, there's longitudinal employment household dynamic data, which is, gives wage ranges by very good locality, so it can actually go down to about a census block group level, which is pretty small, so downtown San Rafael would be an example, and actually look at what are the wage, wage ranges. In each of those cases, they have their imperfections, one of the things that you have to recognize is that for downtown San Rafael, what you really also want to know beyond just the employees, is the proprietors themselves, and how much money they're making, because that has an economic impact on San Rafael as well. So in each case, we're trying to kind of bring different pieces together to provide the best data. But again, like I said, the most perfect data would be from Target.
Right, I think you may have answered my next question, but in the definition of retail, I did not see grocery specifically mentioned, but you've mentioned it tonight. I think one important thing, given the new business model, that Target is moving toward the potential impacts on the community, that an analysis of existing grocery businesses in the relevant market would be appropriate.
That's a good question, in fact, it's, what we'll look at is food stores, and what's the retail spending potential in the food store category at, at occupancy, and compare that to the amount of supply already out there, and whether or not there's capacity, and there may be very well some impacts to the food store category. Recognize that we're not going to look at this grocery store, another grocery store, we're not pointing us to a specific grocery store and saying, that grocery store is losing money, we're saying, if this development occurs, it'll take this much share of existing demand, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Right?
I mean, do you, you would also look at taxable versus non-taxable?
That's right, absolutely, because we have to do that for the fiscal impact analysis.
Okay, and then finally, and I'll turn it over, my colleague mentioned this, but I also wanted to reemphasize, in selecting the case studies, we really do have to look at similarly situated.
Right.
I mean, Nevada, obviously, for a variety of reasons, makes the grade, but in terms of others, demographics, type of downtown, mix of retailers, et cetera, should fit that bill.
Right, it would also be helpful to have examples where there is a cohesive downtown next to a Target, so you could really see the juxtaposition of the two.
Mark?
Yeah. I'd like to talk a little bit about the, the presentation of the data, and, and how the report is, is put together, and to use the South City example, the Walmart example, of finding deleterious impacts, how, how do you communicate those impacts? Is it, you know, a percentage of jobs lost, or is there a narrative, I mean, how exactly will you present the, the data, you know, in a factual way?
Right, it's primarily mathematics, it's just looking at what's projected for that given year of when the project opens, and comparing that to the surrounding supply, and what, how retail is performing, and how much of a decrease that is, and then you can actually look at what you think will be the market share associated with the Target, and how much that will impact the surrounding business. So the way we would show it is, here's the, here's the supply, here's the estimated demand of the market area, this is how it changes with the Target, and then what's, the math there is kind of figuring out, okay, with that Target introduced, this is how it impacts the existing stores in the area, and these are the type of stores that are most likely to be impacted by the, by the reason, by the type of goods that they're selling.
And would you show, not just a net positive or negative, or whatever that fiscal revenue would be for the city, but also, for example, you know, spending money that's recirculated through the city due to a loss or increase of jobs?
Right, right, okay, so that'll be the economic impact piece, so that, that first part that I was talking about was just, what's the impact to the commercial establishments overall? Then we have to ask that second question, which is, what's the economic gain or loss associated with this, with this project? So once we figure out that net, then we have to put it into an in-plan model, and we look at how it impacts San Rafael, so we would use that to see how it resonates through the local economy.
Okay, is there an example where perhaps you got your data wrong, and, you know, the community went ahead and made a decision, and its impact was different from what you thought? Can you give an example of something like that?
Well, let's, I can say this, our data is very transparent, so what you see is what you get, you're going to get what, the projections that are in there are something that any person who wants to go through the data can review and criticize at their, at their leisure. There are examples of projections provided by ABAG or for other communities that say there's going to be a growth in income of X over a series of period of time, and then when you look at the data in actuality, it's actually declined, I'm sure there have got to be examples of that.
You can give one where it increased.
I can't speak to a specific, well, yeah, of course, there's probably examples of increasing as well, because what you're doing is you're looking at real capita, per capita income growth, and you're comparing consumer expenditure surveys to figure out what retail categories are growing or shrinking, and you're trying to understand really how much of that is already captured within the local community, and how much leaks to other places. And so in that analysis, you're using established local economic data and projections, and the projections obviously are difficult, as we all know, or we would all probably be millionaires in the stock market. So as a result, we're, we're basically trying our best shot to, to look at what the future will hold in terms of the future economy and retail spending.
When, when I'm looking at the urban decay analysis that you guys prepared, you know, it talks about an increase in, in market demand with an increase in salaries or income. Can you talk a little bit about the relationship between consumer spending and increase in income, and the correlation between the two, and, and why they're so linked?
So when you see gross per capita income increase, a certain share of that is discretionary, so a portion, you immediately cut off portion just due to inflation, right? And then the remainder is discretionary spending that could be spent within the local economy, or it can be spent elsewhere. So you use that mechanism to figure out both, what's the, what's the trajectory, how things are growing, and then also looking at population growth, and as population grows, then of course, retail spending increases. So from those two metrics, or parameters, those measures, we are able to determine how much expected increase in retail sales demand there is, or is not.
And we have, we have pretty slow and low growth in population in Marin County, and in the trade area, identified in the urban decay analysis, so a lot of that spending growth was tied directly to income.
Right, so this is what's great about this study, is that you're actually going to be, not only just doing a traditional urban decay study, which is asking a very specific question about whether commercial establishments are about whether commercial establishments were left permanently vacant, you're actually looking at what's the net change. And from that, we're going to have new data as of 2009, which reflects a different picture than what was represented in the original study. So whatever the data is presented today will be more likely a better reflection, maybe a little bit more pessimistic, but a better reflection of where we'll be in the next five years.
And trends continue to be that as income grows, if that's ever happening, that people are going to continue to spend at historic levels of spending. I mean, that's, you know, kind of an open issue as, as times have changed.
Yeah.
If the people do return to that, will they be, again, consuming at that same level or if habits have, have changed?
Right. So remember when I talked about the, the decline in California retail sales of around 19% from third quarter of 2006? It's not all categories. Certain categories lost more than others. So you have to keep that into account as well. So there are certain fixed expenses that have generally remained relatively healthy, grocery, general merchandise. There are other discretionary spending like luxury goods and automobiles and durable goods that have seen substantial declines. And so you have to look at that when you're looking at what is the potential opportunity within any given jurisdiction.
All right. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about the wages issue, which it seems cloudy at best with the type of data available, whether it's Target's data or even local merchants, what actual salaries or wages might be or the incomes of proprietors. So, you know, how do you present data like that when you only have a fraction or percentage of, of available data, whether it be Targets or others?
Okay, so there's, there are a couple that I mentioned. I'll go back to the.
No, I mean, you talked about that, but I mean, you know, what type of accuracy do you give to that type of thing?
Well, so the, it's different for different data sources. So I said that open door, I don't know how accurate that is because it's pretty limited in what it provides. The LEHD data is actually the unemployment survey and it's the wage survey that they're, that they're reporting to the Economic Development Department and to the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So I, I feel pretty comfortable with the employee information on that. In terms of gross receipts, that's the information that you're receiving, the city of San Rafael. So I feel comfortable with that to the extent that it's reported as taxable. The other piece in terms of non-taxable goods, that is normally done on a gross revenue basis, so you know generally how much money is non-taxable, for example, in grocery stores versus, and you back into what that is in terms of gross sales. So those are kind of the mechanisms that you use to determine how much is spending right now. And when you're looking at wages, you're going to get either wage ranges, which will not be very good data. It won't be, it'll tell you whether you're making $35,000 or $80,000. It won't tell you if you're making $25,000 and benefits. It's not going to give you that type of information. Does that follow? So there's, the accuracy is really different by the type of data that we're really using. And that's why best form would be to have the Target information as well as the LEHD data to understand downtown San Rafael.
Yeah, no, I mean, I really appreciate you explaining it. You know, we have different nuances in ways that we're asking these questions, but I think we want to have as best a sense as possible what we're buying.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And so, you know, what type of report will we be getting back so that we can make the best decision possible?
Right.
And I think the, the thing that the council probably least wants to do is commission a report that doesn't answer the questions that we want or answers them in a way, provides answers that do not help us make a decision or do not help us feel comfortable making a decision one way or the other. And so illuminating that has been helpful. Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Tim, you had a follow-up question?
Quick follow-up. Mr. Quinn, to one of the points Mark was making, do you break down on the employment issue, full-time versus part-time employment and whether benefits are offered?
The second question will be difficult because the LED, the employment survey information doesn't necessarily include that data. The CAL EDD does. So for San, for downtown San Rafael, for example, I won't be able to tell you how many of them are receiving benefits versus not. If Target provides that information, then I'll be able to describe that, but I won't be able to compare that to what San Rafael is doing right now. The CAL EDD will have it by retail, by category again, but it will not be local, so it won't be specific to San Rafael. But it will, but part-time, I didn't answer the first part of that question.
Right.
Part-time and full-time, yes, it does have that information. So it tells me how many part-time employees there are and how many full-time because that deals with your unemployment benefits.
I have a couple of questions. And looking at your chart on page five of the cost, it looks like it's about $4,000 per community when you do the survey.
Which one, number five on?
Yeah. Case study, it's about 4,000.
Yes.
Well, I'm going to recommend that you do six at least.
Okay.
I think it's important. You know, I can sit here and tell you my pros and cons on Dublin versus Warren Creek versus Santa Rosa, but somewhere along the line, we need to look at some of those. The second question is, you mentioned the sales tax and some of this is proprietary and I know we don't release company's sales taxes, but I think a question you can ask is, when Target came into your community, they must have projected, as they're doing here, what the sales tax would be. So the question is, not how much are you getting now, but did they meet their target?
Right.
I'm assuming you can get that kind of an answer.
Yeah, okay.
And then there was some discussion about low population growth. On the other hand, Marin has the highest per capita income in the state, if not the nation, as I remember. So there's got to be some balance between the number of people and the amount of disposable income that people have to spend, so hopefully it'll help us on that. And I guess that's one of the questions is, how do you normalize things? And I'll direct you to read an article in either yesterday's or Saturday's Press Democrat, which assessed the retail market in Santa Rosa and how one of the stores that we have here in San Rafael, I forget which one, one of the new stores we have up at North Gate, they exceeded their expectations by fivefold this holiday season. They've hired a number of people. They're going to continue to keep a number of people on the staff, but the vast majority of the people they have are part-time and that's obviously because of the benefit issue. There was some discussion about salaries in there. She may want to see if you can find that article.
Okay.
But it was pretty revealing. I think that's it for now. Barbara, did you have something?
Yeah, just, I wanted to just follow up on the wages. I was just curious now, is it the industry norm that these companies open up their books and let you look at anything you want to see? Like Federated, when you do a report on them, do they ever say, "Here you are, take any one of our hundred stores and, and look at their," the way we do our books? Or, you know, it seems to me like that's asking for way too much from, from a group that there's a lot of competition between all these people. When you did your report on Walmart, did they open up their books and say, "Here?" So I, I think that's just saying, "We'd like to do that, but why would they let you do that?" I mean, I just, no one, then everyone else would know what they did.
Right. It's an excellent point. And we don't know, I, I would hope that maybe the more information they provide, the better it is for them, but, because otherwise we have to rely on average multipliers and we're not getting that specific data.
No, no.
But it is a publicly traded company, so we know a little bit about their wage information, but it's not specific to the geography and it's definitely not provided kind of by, by classification.
Yeah. And, you know, I ask my kids at Starbucks, they say, "Oh, we start at $10." And so that's, you know, but Pete's pays probably the same and so on. But there's a lot of other industries out there, baking, banking and so on. They don't pay their tellers very much, very, very low wages to begin. So I don't know if you're going to look at other industries or simply keep that to the retail industry when you are looking at the wages.
We are going to look at specific categories, but it's also, we're looking at location. So again, downtown San Rafael is one of the areas that we're looking at in terms of what type of wages are paid.
Like how many banks we have and how many this and how many that?
Right.
How about the restaurants? Lots and lots of nice restaurants and manicure places, lots of those.
That, that again will be based on the, the LEHD or the, and that again will be wage ranges. And so especially restaurants where you have waitstaff.
Yeah.
I don't know how good that data will be.
All right. So, okay, thank you. It's just, it's hard to pull it all together and make sense out of it, I know.
Greg, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have three more questions, one for Mr. Quinn, one for staff, and one I'm not sure which of the two it's for. But while I have Mr. Quinn up here, let me start with a big, hard one that has several parts because I don't know whether they would be included in such a study or they could be included in such a study. They're clearly outside the scope of such a study because I'm not a professional economist. This is an economics study. I don't know exactly what is considered economics. Some things I may think are economics, but you may set me straight. A lot of this is based on, well, what communications we've received in the last month or two, but even today. But, but the first one is, I first learned 20, 25 years ago that San Rafael has a jobs housing imbalance. Well, I, and I still believe that. And I, I never hear that talked about in regard to this project. And so that's why I've always been an affordable housing advocate. We need more housing. Well, if we're adding more jobs, does that exacerbate this jobs housing imbalance? Is that something that's likely to appear in some form, the effect of, on the jobs housing imbalance of this Target?
Well, we will look at the change in employment as part of our analysis, but it won't be looking at the other part of the equation, which is, what's your housing right now? What's your current jobs housing balance and how does this change? So we have not specifically looked at that component. I presume that the draft or the EIR has addressed those type of questions in its population, employment and housing section?
Well, actually, we have looked at the comparison of this store, the proposal with the general plan projections, and this is very much within those commercial projections. Our last general plan made a very definitive effort to address the jobs housing imbalance. And so we really have sort of shifted that focus. So we are getting far more housing these days than we are seeing job production. So Target is obviously the largest of the commercial opportunities that we've seen in the last several years. And again, given the fact that there's so little vacant commercial property available, we don't anticipate a great deal more.
And they have, Target has said in their application that 80, typically 85% of their employees live within two miles of their store. Is that a claim that you would look at in your case studies or elsewhere?
Yeah, we could look at that. That's something we can look at.
Thanks. The second big question about whether, wondering whether or not it will be part of your study or not, is many Target opponents have made the claim, and this is not just Target, but all big, all change generally, unless they happen to be based in San Rafael, which is not likely, that money circulating in the economy, of course, is much greater with a locally owned business than it is with a chain store. And I, for different sets of statistics, with some ranging from 50% for locally owned businesses, for 20%, for, or 15%, or I can't remember the exact numbers, for chains. That seems like a major economic issue for us. Is that something that's likely to be touched on in your study?
Well, only in the extent that if we're looking at wage information and what's, how much people are getting paid and how it's, where they live versus the local proprietor and where they live, will we have that information? So for example, if a store owner, if we, if we find information on gross receipts and then we look at the wage information and are able to understand that, then we can understand how much essentially profit conceivably could be lifted from the project and then be revenue that's further injected into the local economy. So that share is the level of money that, that is localized versus a chain where that money, that profit goes to your stockholders, you know, who own Target. So they, that money is not localized. The difficulty is first, you have to figure out what's the share of profit of each establishment, what's the, whether or not they live locally or not, and then how much of that money is actually spent within the local economy. Those are three big questions. There have been a number of studies on this and they have varied outcomes based on which side they're on.
Of course.
The final big question, which I consider the most important economics issue of all, but I just don't know if it'll be in your study in some form. A lot of the problem, it's been alluded to in various ways, but not as bluntly as I'm about to put it, as many of the critics that have communicated with us, as recently as today have put it. A lot of people consider that the problem with chain stores generally and especially big box retail like Target is that it creates not only such low wages, that it's fighting for ever lower wages and it just creates what some people call a race to the bottom. Now, that's a very important issue for a lot of people and a race to the bottom can have psychological as well as economic impacts throughout our community. Is this race to the bottom idea something that you would touch on in your report?
No. We wouldn't be looking at generally how that impacts individual establishments at that level.
Not individual establishments, I'm talking on a macro level of.
Macro level. We, we haven't scoped for any type of assessment of how this has larger impacts on the competitiveness of retail and how that impacts wages within specific industries. That's not the level of, of analysis that we're doing. We're getting more at kind of what's the, the net change, the net difference. So it's not going to say this specific establishment or these sets of establishments will reduce their labor costs by X amount to compete with Target. One, because I think it's a bit of false precision, that you're, you're, you're making a lot of guesses to get to that point. Two, there's very little data to get to that answer, so we would be making a lot of assumptions and accounting for a lot of literature reviews to get to that analysis. And I think to do a real thorough analysis on that specific item, you would be, six months later, you would be still answering this question and be, it'd be a long.
I realize it's a big topic and it's broader than just San Rafael. The, the question, I'm not sure whether it goes to you or to staff, and I'll give you a shot at it, you can demurder staff or give it a shot, is you mentioned some experience you have doing community impact reports and specifically with, on big, the effect of big box retail. I go back and forth on whether experience is a good thing. On the one hand, I don't want this to be your first one. On the other hand, if you've done hundreds of them, there's a tendency to dial it in or maybe not be as specific or even be accused of bias if your reports have been too favorable to big box retail. So I guess the question is, what level of experience with community impact reports on big box retail is the right amount and do you have that right amount? And I'm looking for an answer from staff on that, too.
You got me, I know, I can't.
All right, you may, staff have an opinion on what's the appropriate level of experience?
I could start off. I think that the appropriate level of experience is, is understanding these types of studies and having done this sort of work before and having the type of firm that is qualified that understands the data that's available that could put these studies together. So I personally wouldn't say that there's an upper limit on what's too many. I'd want to make sure that anyone that was doing this for us has, has done these sorts of studies before.
Okay.
And also understands the local market.
Understands the local market, helpful. You were here for the planning commission meeting and the two, and our two council meetings last month.
My colleague Ben Sigmund was here for the planning commission. He's in the East Coast right now. He's the principal in charge and I'm an advisor in the role of this project.
And you have access to our tape recordings so you can hear the public's comments and there were minimal council comments until tonight.
We had a long disclosure before this meeting.
So you, you'll hear exactly what was said, okay. And my final question is the easiest of all, actually, and it's for staff.
You have the five, Greg, but go ahead.
All right. This is a quick, simple, easy one for staff and I think, not for Mr. I believe it was explained to us, but I'm not sure if it was clear enough. And I know the public is concerned too as to when exactly we need to go out for an RFP and when we don't. And when you think it's appropriate based on having pre-selected a firm and they sat in on the last few meetings to go ahead with that firm, if you're comfortable that, you know, one firm is going to produce a good, a comparable job, you know, based on their qualifications compared to somebody else, I don't know if this is for Nancy Mackel or Bob Brown or.
I'll take a first shot at it. It, it really depends on the project. There's certainly no requirement to go out for a request for proposals, an RFP for professional services agreements. If it was a construction job, that would be a different thing, you go out to a formal bid, but to hire a professional, we don't need to do that. And most often, if the funder's requiring it, we'll go and do that. So for the NTPP bike projects and you're bringing in federal funds, they have a whole process, you've got to do it. If there's state money, you're going to do that. We did it for some large projects like the Smart Station Area Planning Consultants. We knew we would draw from a lot of architects from all over to try and do that, so we did that. We were starting from scratch. We did it for the Pickleweed advise, Pickleweed Expansion. We went through RFPs. But there's lots of examples where we don't do it, in this case where someone was sitting through all those meetings and the firm had special knowledge, we thought it made sense to go with it. And that's typically the reason, or if it's small enough, that we won't do it. So we, we did not do them for the rail consultants that we were bringing onboard to help our paperwork director look at the smart rail line. That we, we went directly sole source. That we, we went directly, so sourced with someone, because he had worked with us before on Anderson Drive, and some of the specific, it's a real, it's a real specialty, and he knew our market area, so we didn't go out through an RFP for that. We don't go out for an RFP with our BID, BID director every year. We've got a person here, John Webster, she's doing the work locally, she's so closely connected here, it makes sense to keep her going, and we do a professional services contract with her. We don't do it for our downtown farmer's market, we use a professional services contract with the CBE events. Again, many years of experience, they have local knowledge, you bring them on and you go forward. So, those are just a few examples. It's usually the project manager, like myself, making that call, but often in consultation with the city manager or others. But in this case, we think we've made the right decision. These, these folks sat through those long meetings, they heard everything, and they were able to jump right in, and they were here in town to help us scope this up quickly and keep this project moving.
Thank you. Okay. Mark, you had a follow-up, then Barbara has a follow-up.
No, I said no.
Oh, okay, Mark.
All right, thank you. What type of, you know, expertise or, or experience do you guys have in, in public benefits analysis? Because there are public benefits tied to this project. And let me, I see you nodding, so let me just be specific. We, we've had children speak to us that were more effective than Target last time in, in making their case, and, and one of the, the key issues that were of concern to me were the public benefits that Target and the city had agreed to. And so, I've, I've shared my feelings about that with staff, and, you know, I, I want to have those things hammered out before we ever see them again. And they're supposed to deliver us data to help us come to some agreement on the finer details of those public benefits, because we'll never get them back after a vote.
Okay.
So, the, a couple of the concerns that we have about this, this project is the impacts on traffic. And so, two of the public benefits that they're offering are a bus pass program and a, a bicycle program. And so, what I'm interested in is where, how do we get to mode shift for their employees to take advantage of those programs and actually change the way that they commute to and from work? And do you see that type of analysis as something that might be a part of this in community impact, or outside the scope of, of what you're looking to do?
Yeah, it would be outside of the scope of what we're doing in terms of traffic specifically, because this is an economic study. So, what we're looking at would be fiscal, employment, economic, those would be the kind of three main things. On the fiscal, you're looking at, what does this mean in terms of your budget, your general fund? How does it impact that? Underemployment, what's the change, changing jobs, and what does it mean in terms of the type of wages that are being offered, to the extent that data is available? Then it's about, how does that resonate through your economy, which is that indirect and induced economic impact? That's a, that's a, that's the third level of analysis, how much more money is being generated or not within your, your local economy. But specific to mitigations related to traffic or other components that might be considered, our analysis will be taking a look at that.
Okay, so no one in the sustainability practice would look?
Well, I, I've done, you know, public benefit analysis for climate action plans. We've done a, a number of different kind of cost-benefit studies for a proposed new port in South San Francisco. So, it depends on each and the individual project and what we're trying to look at. You can, you can value the benefit of recreation, what's the value of additional recreation assets within your community? But specific to this scope, I'm only really addressing those items that I just listed.
But we could expand the scope of the project, and you have the staff and expertise and acumen to say, to, to analyze the data on how we would get the type of mode shift that would actually have an impact or change?
I, I don't think so. I think that would be a Ferrin-Pierce or a Nelson-Nygard, there are a number of transportation planning firms that could probably provide better insight than ours.
I think Bob Brown wants to comment on this, Bob.
Well, in response to Councilman Levine's question, I think, yes, this would be something that a transportation consultant would look at, although, again, looking at things like, you know, a transit pass program or a bike discount program, I think it's going to be pretty speculative for even a transportation consultant with experience to guesstimate mode shift. It really is dependent upon so many other factors, such as, you know, the availability of bike lanes, you know, the proximity of workers, all those things really play into this.
Bob, follow-up, though, just to, yeah, I mean, a lot of times in these community impact reports, there is an evaluation of the social costs, and that, that can include public infrastructure, social benefit programs, and whether those costs increase. Can you talk about that a little bit, or maybe one or both of you? I mean, is there any consideration to, because, again, through the public testimony, I think a number of possible kind of, whether you call them externalities, or, or public costs have been identified potentially. I mean, Mark's kind of getting granular on some of the ones that were brought up that are of concern, but more broadly speaking, potential highway improvements, if those are needed, or if there is, if there are jobs created without health benefits, does that increase cost in a way societally? So, I, you know, I don't know if we've kind of tried to break that down at all, or if that is considered as, I know that those kind of issues are considered in some community impact reports, so is that right?
Yeah, they are. Occasionally, they will be evaluated in terms of larger social issues. Primarily, it's through literature review and not individual analysis of your specific community. And it really varies by the geography that you're evaluating, because certain things, certain burdens are not placed on the local jurisdiction, but are placed on the county or the state or the federal government. So, how it impacts the city of San Rafael might be very different than how it impacts the county, the state of California, for example. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to under, underline the point that Damon was saying that I was making, which is?
I broadened it a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really believe that we need to be granular about the agreements or promises that Target is making. And so, when we have empty promises of transit pass programs or bicycle programs, we need to know what that means, and we need to have some prediction as to the outcomes, so that we understand the currency of those agreements, what that actually means to the project. And with traffic being some of the greatest concerns for the neighborhood, I don't want to blindly be saying that, you know, if we were to support this, I, I mean, I, I just couldn't do it without having a sense of what the actual public benefit means to our community.
And I think we understand very clearly from the last council meeting, you want specifics from Target, we get, we get that.
Yeah.
But then to translate those specifics into reduction in vehicle trips, you know, based upon, you know, putting in a path to the Shoreline Parkway, to the Shoreline Bike Path, or, you know, trying to promote ridership among employees, or even getting, you know, you know, bike lockers, those sorts of things, I think it's going to be very, very difficult to really hone in. I mean, I will tell you that in the EIR, our, our city traffic engineer, public works director takes a very conservative approach, so we don't even discount, you know, mode shift for, for transit users, bicyclists, et cetera. Again, trying to anticipate the worst-case traffic scenario.
I do appreciate the conservative approach she has to those numbers.
Can I, can I add one thing to this? We did hear very clearly at the last meeting the, the desire for more detailed in, details in these programs, and so, Planning Manager Paul Jensen did put a list together for Target to say, we would like more details using Nevada Store, if that's the best example you have, where it's worked for bike discounts, et cetera, and we'd like to get that in writing before the next meeting when we come back in, in March. And so, we're expecting that we will get a lot more detail worked out on everything we can, and I'm sure there's some that's proprietary, but certainly some of it, like a bike discount, they can write up for us, and we expect to get that.
Yeah, and I mean, sooner than, than later is, you know, I, I'd just like to know this before I'm actually voting on something, what it is, and before the week of it, it would be helpful to us, I think.
Understood.
Regarding this particular report, though, I would like the issue of public costs considered, to the extent appropriate.
And I just need a little better definition on the public.
Infrastructure costs, et cetera, I mean, if that would be appropriate.
We could, we could get more detailed on the fiscal impact and I'll seize portion of the work and get at some of the impacts associated with that, if that's one thing that you're looking at. The social costs would be a little bit more difficult to evaluate specific to San Rafael. So, that's just something.
Possibly that's something, as you discuss this issue with these other cities.
Absolutely.
You could pursue that, at least from their actual experience.
Yes. Okay. And I, we could also offer a look at the literature review as another piece, if you so want to look at that. But again, it comes from very specific points of view.
Can I just make sure I got that right? We're looking to try and get a sense of externalities or social costs through the survey portion when we talk to the other cities, the six, if we're indeed going up to six cities, we would try and get that from, from that. Is that what I just heard?
I'd say that's one where you can try and get it and see what they tell you, yeah.
I think that's part of it, and another part is, is drilling down to as much detail as we can on the fiscal impact analysis section, to make sure that we cover as much as we can cover there.
Right. Okay, Mr. Quinn, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.